Hey, we're gonna, everyone, we're gonna give it just a minute or two. Anne Lickter is gonna join us hopefully in just a minute. So we're gonna just wait for until about
I think she just came in.
Did she?
Anne, are you Resource Rural?
Yeah, I'm here. Sorry, I was running another meeting. We'll rename.
Yes, so once you get settled, we'll get started.
Why can't I change my name?
You did.
Oh, okay. I changed my profile. Great.
Okay.
All right. Sorry for the delay.
That's all right. So is everybody ready? Okay. All right, we're going to call to order the town of Kensington, February 12th council meeting. We had the agenda together when we were going to be meeting in person. So we're going to go the Pledge of Allegiance since we have no flag. Next item on the agenda is the moment of silence. So if anyone has any one or anything that they would like to lift up, I would like to lift up the Sowers family. A good friend of mine passed away earlier this week. And so I want to, I will be lifting them up. Is there anything else?
I'd like to lift up all the families who are affected by the recent cuts to the, in the federal government and people who have lost their jobs and potentially livelihoods.
Okay, thank you. Anything, anyone else? Okay, we could just bow our head for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. Council, Susan sent you the minutes for January 8th and January 24th. I did not see any edits via email. So is there, are there any? No? If I could get a motion to approve the January 8th Town Council Meeting Minutes?
I'll move to approve the January Town Council Meeting Minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much. Okay, we also have the January 24th Special Town Council Meeting. This was a closed session. Could I get a approval? Our motion to approve?
Sure, I move that we approve the minutes from the Special Town Council Meeting of, it was January 24th.
Is there a second? Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. Excuse me. Okay, we're gonna get through the acknowledgements from the mayor and Town Council. They, we are acknowledging that we had a closed session on January 24th with our town attorney to discuss the legislative bill 11625. On February 18th, we will be having a council work session to discuss the FY 26 budget as well as other legal matters with our town attorney. And then on the MC 11625, if I can get our town attorney Sue Ellen Ferguson and Connor to give an update on that.
So I'll just remind people of what it is. And then Sue Ellen, if you'd be kind enough to just state where it is at the moment. But 11625 is a bill that was being worked on with our state legislature, but we're working with our partners in planning and partners at the county level to try and reconcile some differences of language around housing and uses within the residential areas, partially because the governor set out a bill that uses different terminology from what Montgomery County and county planning uses around single unit versus single family versus single home. And what we are looking for is clarity for the different jurisdictions that rely on this. And so there was some amended language that was proposed. And that language has then went through some different rounds of, of working with the different municipalities, a group that had come together as well as members of the local jurisdiction to try and find language we could all support for the state bill that would help to define what are the uses? How many units would be permitted? What is and is not regulated so that we have a clear understanding from a municipal standpoint of what our powers are as far as regulation within our residential zones?
Thank you, Connor. And in fact, there was a good deal of discussion and cooperation with this bill. And it clarifies now that residential units with four or fewer units in them are subject to the additional zoning requirements that municipalities are allowed to place such things, such as setbacks, lot coverage, that that will continue into the future. And there's no ambiguity about it now. There was support from Planning Board, County Council, and the delegation. And so it was voted out of the delegation is going to the House Environmental and Transportation Committee. And it will be cross filed in the Senate. So there's gonna be another level, level, a couple levels of review, but hopefully based on the fact that this would be looked at as a local bill and that has got the support of all the real, the players who are interested. Hopefully, it should go, hopefully go through without any further amendments.
Well, I know just, you know, there are 12 municipalities in Montgomery County that do not have planning or our own planning board. And out of the 12, 11 of us were part of this process to come apart was the only one that did not officially sign on. But they also, I talked to Mayor Searcy, and they don't object to it. So they're just a little bit different politics in that particular municipality, but they had no objections to, to the bill, which is, it's just good. Is there any questions amongst the council? Is there any questions from the audience? Okay.
It looks like, Tracy, it does look like Leslie Olson's hands up.
Oh, Leslie, you need to learn to use your, your icon hand.
I wonder where the hand is here. So, so recently, they've come out with now housing. Does that have any effect on what you all were just talking about?
Uh, not, not really, not directly, no. And we were talking about that on the number three, or excuse me, D.
Right, but I, so I'll clarify real quick, Leslie. What it really does is when Thrive came out and then the attainable housing strategy came out, which came out as just through a report, there was never any legislative language, ZTA language, but it did introduce the idea that what we know as the single family zones, the R60, which is predominantly what the town of Kensington is, you can build one house on one lot. And that's just the way that the zoning and zoning uses have always been. But, but attainable housing brought forth the idea that maybe we could do, permit duplexes, triplexes, and quadruplexes in the same R60 zones. From our standpoint as a municipality, while this is not yet permitted, we always ask the question, well, wait a second. Regardless of how many units of housing are within the structure, don't we, the municipality, still retain the ability to regulate the, where the building is located, what the setbacks are, what the height is, what the fences are, walls, hedges, all the same ways that we regulate single family homes? And it had to go through all this, you know, partnership with our, you know, both state delegation and the county. But everybody kind of realized like, yeah, we understand how this is. We've confused a lot of things, so this bill helps to clarify that. In the future, should there be essentially, a building is a building is a building, or a structure is a structure is a structure, regardless of its one unit, what we call a single family housing, or a duplex, or a triplex, or a quadplex, anything from one to four units of, of housing, we would still have the right to regulate. We can enforce our setbacks, which are in our code. We can, you know, work on the lot placement. We can enforce what kind of fences go where on the property line. Your question about now housing kind of bleeds into the next moment. I mean, Trace, I can just roll right into now housing if you want.
Wait.
That's fine.
Well, I mean, it's on the agenda. So what now housing is, is it is a ZTA. It is a proposed zoning text amendment 25-02 for workforce housing, where if there are specific lots along the transit corridors, that they might be open to higher density housing, right? You can do, you know, duplexes, triplexes, quadruplexes. You could even do moderate density housing in those areas. But a couple of facts that have come out is that those areas, and for us, this is primarily Connecticut Avenue. In fact, I'm gonna show my screen. I've got so many windows open, I hope I do it right. Here we go. So there, I'm gonna share this one. This is the map that just came out. Can you all see it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We can see your tail as well, if you want to get rid of that.
Now, I got so many screens open, Tracy. All right. This is what happens when I'm not at my office. So here is the map for ZTA 25-02. As you can see, we're talking, you know, Baptist Church. We're talking one, two, three, four, five lots. There's one more lot right here that's within the town. So it's six different lots that have been identified that are along Connecticut Avenue that could be, could see additional density. But that density and that development would go through the optional method, which means it goes before the Planning Board. There would be a public review process. It would afford us as a town to provide input and, and whatever, you know, if we want to take up a resolution, we could do so. So they're not, Leslie, to your point, they're not exactly aligned. But this is all coming about because we have a new general plan. And in, and then the Planning Board's recommendations, in order to enact anything, have to be done through ZTAs. And ZTA 2502, which is being referred to as Housing Now, this is the first that we're seeing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so just to let people know, we are going to have a meeting on March 3rd, Monday, March 3rd, 7:00 to 8:30. Councilmember President Kate Stewart will be there as well as Andrew Fritzen and Natalie Fanny Gonzalez, who have introduced the legislation. They are the cosponsors. And so it will also be on Zoom. So where I've sent the flyer promoting the event to the, to the County Council to approve, and then we will put it out to advertise the event. So hopefully, it will be a town hall. So if you want more information on this, you'll be able to come to a lot, come to it live or come to it on Zoom or watch it later on the MMC's YouTube channel. To learn more about it. Any questions about number C or D? I'm not seeing any hands, so we will move on. This is just mostly an announcement, the, on number two, that the Kensington Historical Society and Noise Library and the town of Kensington are going to be participating in the Maryland House and Garden Pilgrimage Tour. It is for June 2026. So this is a big fundraiser for Noise Library because they have got to raise a million dollars. That is their deal with the county executive, that they will take this on. And this is actually a pretty big event that they can make quite a bit of money as far as fundraising. So there's gonna be more information at Mark, at the March meeting. It will be on the agenda. Kate DeWitt from KHS and Lindsay Field from the Noise Library Foundation will attend and be able to answer more questions. But I wanted to make sure that the council and the residents are aware that we will be participating in this event. But we'll have, you know, confirmation on it at the March meeting. So our participation is mainly just looking good, providing the town hall for a luncheon that people will pay tickets for, and then that we will, you know, we, it's not gonna be hard for us to look good because we're not, we already do look really good, especially in the spring. But we, it'll be a townwide event where we'll hopefully, a lot of people will volunteer to be, I guess, kind of ambassadors for this event. So it's very exciting that we are being chosen for this. It's a nonprofit that you have to have a historic building that, and so Noise was perfect for this. And they're very excited. And there'll be house tours of some of our beautiful Victorians and garden tours, of course, of our beautiful parks. Okay, any questions about that? Okay, all right. So we will move on. I know we have the hearing, and so I don't know if we can, if the council has long. Do you think we can get through the council reports in the next 10 minutes? Okay, let's, let's keep going. And then we will, Matt, I'll put you after the hearing. So let's get the council reports first. Okay, so let's start with Nate, can you start?
Sure, thank you, Tracy. Very quick, I have three very quick updates. So first is that Connor and I and some of the Sustainable Kensington team that's working on the food waste program are gonna record a public service announcement next week to get that out with Maryland Municipal Cable. Just wanted to flag that so you can all tune in when it comes out. We'll definitely blast that out to the community so that we can make sure that everyone knows what to do with their, when the food pro, food waste collection program comes, curbside in about a month starts. Matt can give us the exact date, maybe when he gives his updates. Or maybe you know it, Tracy.
Of what? Oh, no, we don't have a confirmation yet on when we're gonna get the, the containers. Is that right, Alex?
Yes, I reached out to the vendor last week and they're supposed to get back to me about when they'll arrive. We're hoping beginning of March, though.
But we'll be getting some, Anne, Anne and I have been working with Sustainable Kensington and some of the subcommittees to get some work on materials for getting the, the word out and making sure that the communication and outreach is, starts off on a good foot. The second update was just around
Can I just ask a question? Since I know this video will go viral and we'll get lots of hits on it. You guys need to be very, very careful to make sure people know that this is within this particular town of Kensington, not outside.
Yes, Connor and I will make sure. We're, I think we're gonna even have a map that shows it.
I just wanna make sure, because you know, when it goes into Kensington, New Hampshire, I want to make sure they know that it is not there.
Yeah, we'll save the calls that are gonna flood your, your phones, Alex and Matt. Great, also just to say that we had, we held, Matt, Alex and I were, were in a SHA, Maryland State Highway Administration Quarterly Meeting a couple weeks ago with, you know, a lot of good updates, but no real tangible progress. Some, some results from studies that they're doing that we have requested are gonna be coming in over the next couple months. And I can give a more thorough briefing at the March or April meeting, and Matt and I can do that. But just wanted to flag that. And then last but not least, I don't think anyone on the council besides Anne knows this, but we've again been approached by the Green Bank, the, the County Green Bank, Montgomery County Green Bank, excuse me, to consider how we could partner on some work around resilience. They are interested in helping to finance, co-finance some work around our stormwater, planning, needs assessments, flood risk mitigation, and also in terms of how to finance some of the solutions that we might want to come up with. So I just wanted to flag that for the rest of the council that similar to the energy efficiency grants that they supported us with, where they paid, I think it was like 90 or 95% of the grant. We had to chip in a little bit. We're exploring whether we should do that on the resilience side to, to make sure that we are ready to resist and buttress against the impacts of climate change that we're already feeling. Just wanted to give a heads up.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Connor?
Just two, I think, everybody's been kind of watching, but I think all of the EV stations now are finally back to being operational. Unless Alex, you've been, okay, good. I saw the ones at, at the train and been keeping my eye on the ones at the town hall. So I'm glad to see those got fixed rather quickly. And my only other one, Parking Task Force met on January 30th and had a discussion with representatives from Montgomery County Park and Planning's Parking Division. This was all on parking management strategies, best practices, lessons learned, and even partnership capability when it comes to time for us to investigate consultants and drafting scopes of work. So it was really, really great. It was a question and answer session, some wonderful questions from the committee. But I think it really helped to set the tone for some of the, you know, the topics and ideas we're gonna have to think about and tackle both short term and long term.
Okay, great. Does anybody in the audience have any questions regarding Nate or Connor's reports?
I was just gonna ask that they've changed the charging stations out. And were, are you saying the new ones went down or?
No, I just wanted to make sure they were, they agreed to change them out. And then it was happening seemingly in phases. So it looked like the train station happened rapidly. And then the town hall, they were, I don't know if they like, had the wrong pieces or what, but I think every one of them is now being successfully changed over.
Okay, do we need a different app then?
Yes, I don't recall which app, but they are, they've departed the Shell Recharge Network.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all.
David, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Do you have any data on the usage of the EV charging stations? Are they being used and how much are they being used?
The, we don't get direct reporting. Matt, you can jump in, but the, as far as I know, we don't get direct reporting that, because it's all Pepco, right? As much as we are facilitating these stations being there, the stations are still Pepcos to manage, Pepcos to provide the energy, and then, you know, Pepcos to maintain. There may be that we can request, you know, specific data from each of the machines. Part of the problem was some of them went offline rather quickly. It sounds like we may have gotten the tail end of the last old models that they were using. They've now swapped them out. But anecdotally, as I go by the train station, I see two of the four units used, you know, pretty much every time I pass. And same with town hall, when there are events going on, I'd say, you know, they're turning over as we hoped they would, but they're, they're used quite frequently.
Thank you.
Al, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Tracy. Yeah, I just wanted to answer David's question. So Pepco does file a report with the Maryland Public Service Commission that has usage statistics on all of their chargers that they own, including the ones in Kensington. So if you want to read through a big PDF, you can, you can find all the information you want.
Thank you. All right, if there are no more questions, we'll go on to Anne.
Thank you. David's question and Al's response reminds me of one other small update from Sustainable Kensington, and that is that Al and Bridgette and a few others on the committee are assessing EV charging needs within the municipality. And we'll have some options, ideas that we'll be developing within Sustainable Kensington to bring forward. A couple of updates from the Greenscape Committee. One, a thank you to Catherine Wood, who is with us tonight, who leads our Weed Warriors program. You may have noticed that she has set dates for Weed Warriors volunteer through the rest of the year. These are now on the town calendar. So we encourage residents to join this really awesome volunteer brigade to keep the Silver Creek watershed improving. And then secondly, just want to share that we, we are continuing to look at how we could refresh the design at Ernest Memorial Park, and Alex is helping us meet with a garden landscape designer there in the coming weeks. So hopefully, we'll be developing some ideas to bring forward. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. Darren?
Yeah, um, it just disappeared from my screen. The only thing I was gonna mention was the MML meeting coming up with, with the county executive. But can you help me out and tell me?
Yeah, it's the 20th, Thursday, the 20th. And it's 6:30 at the county executive office.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so I believe I sent out an email to the council. Anne, you did respond that you are not able to go. Nate or Connor, are you able to join or?
While I like this meeting every year, there's a chance I might not be able to go. I'm trying to rearrange some things so I can make it.
Okay.
I would hope that if I'm not there, someone will hold his feet to the fire on the Summit Avenue extension, though, and ask a question about it.
Okay, yeah, I have a little bit of an update on that as soon as it's done with.
But you know what? Nate, challenge accepted.
Okay, there you go. All right, you're gonna be there?
Yeah, I was looking at our calendar, but yes. I've got some internal logistics that, like, everybody, we just gotta juggle a few things, but I'm sure Casey and I can make it work.
Okay, and Darren, are you coming?
I'm planning to, yeah.
Okay, this is, this is a, our annual meeting with the county executive within Maryland, the Montgomery chapter of the Maryland Municipal League. So it's our opportunity to talk to our county executive, and I do plan to be there. Just on an update on the Summit Avenue extension, I got a call from Cecily, who is the Chief of Staff for Kate Stewart on February 6th at 4 o'clock, and that, and I was testifying at 7 o'clock that evening. So I did make it. I did testify and about keeping the Summit Avenue extension on the CIP. And I think it went very well, but we'll see. I've been in touch with Evan Glass, who is the Chair of the Environmental Transportation Committee. And it is, you know, he's hoping they can keep it in there. So more to come. Hopefully, I'll be able to attend the meeting, and they'll have a meeting in March where they will discuss it. My plan to be there, whenever it is, to give the evil eye. So, all right, does anybody in the audience have any questions regarding Darren, myself, and Anne Lickter's? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. I do want to thank the, our Public Works crew for again, doing a fantastic job with last night's snow. They were out and about late last night, getting the roads clear. So by the time you got up in the morning, you had no excuse not to be able to get to work, except that when you left the town, you may not have been able to get much further. But we have a great crew, and I'm so very happy that they do such a great job. So, so when you see, see one of them, please be sure to, to thank them.
Or if you see Resolution RO-05 coming up.
Yes.
Please support it.
Please support it, yes. So we are short a truck. We will get to that resolution about buying a new pickup truck after our hearing. But yeah, they are getting quite expensive. So anyway, okay. So let me find my agenda and let us move on. Okay, so we are going to go past the town manager and staff and go right into the hearing. Because we're on Zoom, I'll need you to raise your hand. We will, it may be hard for us to know who went first, but we will get every hand that is raised. We will certainly call on you. I need a full name and just your street, not your house number, just your street. And I believe, I don't think it's a problem, but what is it usually? Two minutes, Matt, three minutes typically?
We, we typically don't limit in a public hearing, but you know, as, as you notice, please just raise your hand since there's no sign up sheet and turn your camera on. For the public record, so.
Okay, great. Alright, so I will, uh we will go ahead and start with the hearing for ordinance number zero dash zero one dash twenty twenty-five. The public hearing for, for the mayor and council, the town of Kensington, authorizing the sale of certain real estate located at thirty-four twenty. Pliers Mill Road, Kensington, Maryland, that is no longer needed for a public purpose. Um I do know that people were not happy about the public purpose, but that is a legal term, which our town attorney would be happy to address. Why we have to say that. So uh if we can get hands, we'll get started. Uh okay, Leslie, the old fashioned way. And you're on mute.
Okay, I'm Leslie Olson, Wheatley Street. So we've lived here since about eighty-nine. And um that park has always been a part of, of the community. Whether or not it's full of people or not, it is still a wonderful buffer and. Part of the pleasantness of our area. We border commercial activity on one end. And on the other end, right in Pliers Mill, we have that nice park. So it's a nice balance. Losing that takes a big chunk out of um open space for our part of the. Of Kensington. And um I've, I've written several times, um spoken before. I don't know what else can, I can say. I'm disappointed that a park would be even. Considered as a way to generate money. And um, you know, I've raised my concerns before I. The only thing I can hope is that a majority of people feel the same way and. I guess that's all I have to say unless anybody has any specific questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there other hands? Uh Brett? Anne, oh, Beth, so, and it's so tiny for me. Beth?
Yeah, um Beth Meyer on Wheatley Street. And um a couple of days ago, I met a guy with a dog named Daisy. At Joseph's Park and Biscuit and Daisy played together. I just, I don't understand why I'm fine at our investing on Ernst Park, but it seems. I don't understand why we're investing on Ernst Park on Connecticut Avenue. And yet we can't invest in Joseph's Park. I don't, it seems to be a done deal. I have no idea why we can't. We spent so much money on Flynn Park. And just buy a swing, buy a bench. Do a butterfly garden, a pollinator garden. Oh, well, that's the same thing in native garden. Um you saw the. Letter from Zachary Carmichael, where his three-year-old is hugging the tree. Um that's so sad. I mean, people care about this park. It's a green space. And we're not gonna get it back. You can get the money another way. And I, I just, I completely don't understand this. It's got old beautiful trees. And people use it and if. We're investing in so many different other parks and other places, I see no reason why we can't spend a couple hundred. On this park that people use, even when there's been zero investment. I just don't get it.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh Alicia.
Sure, am I off mute now?
Yep.
Great. I second Leslie Olson's comments. I second Beth Meyer's comments. I keep reading and hearing that public feedback is welcome. But despite feedback overwhelmingly against the sale of Joseph's Park. The town plans to proceed with selling the park. I'm very interested in the town attorney's definition of public purpose. I wholeheartedly disagree with the mayor and town council's decision that Joseph's Park is no longer needed for public purpose. That decision is contradictory to all of the discussions by town residents. I have offered repeatedly and the offer still stands to contribute monetarily to activation. Of Joseph's Park. I use the vile air quotes. Because you have heard about people using the park. We play with our dogs. We go and enjoy the trees. I didn't go for the last week or so because I was recovering from COVID. But we went just before COVID. We continue to go. So as I mentioned in December, everyone who tells you they go, we are not liars. When we say we go, we go. And unless you have somebody sitting in that park twenty-four seven to determine that nobody goes. I can't buy that nobody goes. It's just false. It's the same way, and I mentioned this in December, I don't see people in the memorial park. It's harder to get to. But it's a really important park for the veterans. And I would never say nobody goes, so get rid of the park. People go to Joseph's Park. We enjoy it. It is green space. Again, I'm happy to contribute monetarily. I offered to buy a bench. No, we don't want a bench. Is there something else that you would like? A statue by Jason, those are beautiful. Happy to fund that. Money, if money is your problem with activating the park. Again, once again, I'm happy to fund. I have a lot of questions about numbers. And I'll put those in the chat. About numbers of residents and numbers who spoke and for and against, the numbers who wrote and for and against. I have, I'm still interested in the number of alternative sources of funding for the town of Kensington initiatives that have been explored. Congressmember Anne Lichten asked for this in December eighteenth. She asked.
Alicia, she's a council member, not a congresswoman, just.
That might be a lot more powerful.
Well, okay, council member. Sorry, that came out wrong out of my mouth, so thank you, Mayor Tracy, for the correction.
Yeah.
As always, if I say anything that's incorrect, please let me know because that is never my intention. So I didn't see, I did see the two-page write-up. About why the town. Supports the sale of Joseph's Park. But I have not seen anything about alternative financing options. So when you have those. If you could point me to them, that would be great. I do have some other comments, but in the interest of time. I would just say. That I remain wholeheartedly against this. Oh, and I would like to know, this is my last question. Because we keep hearing that we can give feedback and we keep giving feedback and it keeps getting ignored. What legal recourse do citizens in the town of Kensington have to fight the sale of Joseph's Park? And that I'd like an answer to now.
Okay, uh well, just for clarification, uh the article in the journal was from the staff. Which would have been uh our town manager and it is, he is making the proposal to the council. The council has not made a decision. So it was just clarification on what he has asked us to consider. Okay, so just, just for that clarification. So let me ask Sue Ellen to uh answer both questions on why for we have to use public purpose. And what is your recourse? So while you're muted.
Thank you. First of all, the public purpose is determined by the mayor and council. Uh there are many public purposes that are available to a government. And every government has to choose which of those it will follow. Because it depends on what the needs are. And so the council has to balance those needs. And it can be decided by the council that a particular asset of the town. Is no longer used, uh necessary for the use it was originally intended for and can be used for another purpose. And that is what would be happening here. It doesn't mean that the property has no possibility of being used for a public purpose. It's just in terms of the mayor and council deciding what the town's purposes will be. That's, that's where the difference comes in.
Thank you.
And um the. The only way that, uh and once an ordinance is properly adopted. The only way to overturn that is through a referendum. And I'm pulling up actually the town's law right now. Uh because I don't have it off the top of my head, whether you have that uh for ordinances. You do have it for charter amendments because that's a state requirement. But um I'm having to check. And Matt may know that this off the top of his head too.
Yeah, I am sorry, Sue Ellen, I don't.
Yeah. I'd be really, really interested in that because all through this, all through this, since two years ago. We've heard, give us feedback. We're interested in your feedback. Give us feedback. You will have an opportunity to be involved in this decision. And all along the way, we've given feedback. And now it seems that, and, and nowhere along the way were we told, by the way, if you don't want this resolution, this is what you do. By the way, if you don't want this ordinance introduced, this is what you do. So. I'm very interested in the current legal recourse that citizens of town of Kensington have. And I, I do encourage you to look up what that is so that we can get. An official answer and I don't know the best way for you to distribute that information, but sooner would be better than later. Because we've been patient, we've been giving input and it's just being ignored. I do have the answer.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
I just don't like to do, say it off the top of my head and I can't recite it in full. There has to be, a referendum is available after adoption of an ordinance. The section in the charter that references this is section four eleven. And there are requirements to do it both as to time and the number of qualified voters that would have to sign a petition. To take it to referendum. So that would be on your website, on the town's website in the charter.
Thank you. I'm not going to ask why none of this was told to us beforehand that. It's too late once an ordinance is introduced because that's where we stand today. The ordinance has been introduced. So now we learn how to. Act based on that. Thank you very much, Sue Ellen, for giving that information. It's really much appreciated.
And, and we should clarify probably, and you can read the section four eleven. It's um within twenty-eight days after passage of the ordinance. And we're not even gonna take up the ordinance until next month anyway. So it's, it's at least two.
It's the passing. It's not the introduction, it's the passing. Oh, thank you so very much for that clarification. That is wonderful and so much appreciated. Thank you so very much.
Matt, was the, uh part of the package, uh I know we got them, but I, I think they are, I'm trying to go through. The entire package here. Did that include all the um people that have given their input?
It has not because we were still receiving uh public comments up until almost six o'clock this evening. Uh we can certainly make those available prior to the March, uh the March twelfth meeting. Um just for the record, we've received twelve, I'm sorry, fourteen public comments. Two of them were not town residents, but we also received a letter uh from the Kensington Historical Society. And we also included uh Leslie Olson's letter to Kensington today, even though it was not addressed to the mayor and council.
And how many of those have been in favor of the sale and how many have been against the sale?
I will defer to the mayor and council on those numbers.
I believe of the emails, they have all been in favor of selling. And quite a few of those people are on Wheatley as well as Oberon. They are on the north side. And then the Kensington Historical Society talked about the um. Green space, how important it was, but if we did decide to sell the property. That they like the idea of purchasing two additional green spaces on the north side. Uh Leslie's was on the Kensington, so you probably saw that one. So I guess of the letters and of the ones we have received, only Leslie's was absolutely against it.
Okay, that's really good to know. And is the public comment period still open until March seventh?
Yes, it's would be open till that Friday before March twelfth.
That's wonderful. And will we be receiving the information about exploration of alternative sources of funding before March seventh?
Or we will be, we will be discussing that regarding uh at our work session and then we can put out something at that time.
Much appreciated. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh Beth, did you want to add something? Are you on mute? No, now you're on mute again. Okay.
I know that Zach Carmichael wrote a long, very thoughtful email to you recently, and that was against selling it.
Zach is not, does not live in the town and while this is a public meeting. We don't necessarily weigh people that live outside of the town. He is, does not pay taxes and he doesn't vote. So that, you know, people that give opinions outside the town are treated a little less. Uh than the people that live inside the town that do pay taxes and do vote.
Okay, but it does make the town look good. Um you know, green spaces do make the town look good.
And I know we're not objecting to that, obviously, uh because, you know, part of this sale would include purchasing two additional green spaces, so.
Why, why purchase two additional when you've got a green space? That's what I completely don't understand.
Part of it are stormwater management opportunities for the town. Uh Anne, you had something you wanted to say?
Yeah, it's really just a question or clarification. Um I know that we're in the public comment period. And that's why um you're referencing or Matt and others that gave the tally are referencing what's been received. Within the last few weeks during this open period. But there were other meetings uh where this uh was on the agenda and there were public comments both against and for. So I assume those are still considered as part of the record, even if they're not within the hearing period.
Well, and that's why uh I believe uh Mr. Carmichael's letter was included. As well as uh an additional one from the townhouses. That are not in the town. If somebody just said something verbally at a meeting that wasn't public. Announced publicly, then that's a little bit more difficult to capture.
I mean, in prior town council meetings, when this was on the agenda. And people spoke against and for the sale, there were.
Well, I, I think that's certainly something that the council, I mean, we're not gonna, I mean, we're here to hear. This is something that we will discuss before we pass the bill.
I'm just raising the point because I don't want people to think we're only basing a decision off of fourteen comments in the last three weeks. It's a bigger record.
Absolutely not. Yeah. Okay, was there uh other hands?
I just, uh I just wanted to follow up on Anne's point there that we're not, you know, that we are taking other things into consideration. Not just these fourteen comments, because I think. Um I think it's important for, I think it's important for you to know, Alicia, that. We are listening and I am listening and I think it's, I do take a little bit issue to the, to your assertion that we're not listening. Or that the whole of the council isn't listening. There's been a lot of dialogue on this on both sides. And I think, I wanna, I want to leave you with the confidence that you are being listened to. That's what this is for. And I can guarantee you that, you know, the dialogue makes an impact on me. So people are listening to you. People are listening to the people who are supportive of it too. But we are, we are hearing the public dialogue.
Thank you so much for that reassurance. It's very much.
Just, just to echo Nate's comment, I mean. I, I'm the one that when we first took up this issue, first recently took up the issue. I just wanted one here. I wanted to introduce an ordinance and then have a public hearing. I just wanted one hearing, I wanted to introduce an ordinance and then have a public hearing like we're required to, and have that be the record. And others on the council wanted additional public hearings to make sure we heard from people, to make sure we gave people the opportunity to weigh in. And that, and that's what we've done, and so, you know, I, I, well, I just echo Nate's view that, that we, we do listen. Speaking individually, I will say, I don't count heads or hands, I don't look and see how many for and against we've got. I feel like in this role, I'm asked to use my judgment. And that judgment isn't counting heads, it's um, looking at the arguments for and against. And you know, you are, you know, if, if, if I have bad judgment, well, there's an election in June. And I don't need to be flippant about that, but that's, that's, that's what we do.
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat, were you asking me, did I, were you saying that I did something that I shouldn't have done, or were you explaining what you do?
I'm, I'm, I'm just explaining my approach to this issue that I, 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 like Nate says, like all of us, I believe, we, we are listening to the arguments for and against, and when the record closes and we've received all the public input we can, you know, we'll make a decision.
Okay, um, Al, you have your hand up?
Yes, uh, I wanted to bring to your attention a, another financing option. Um, you know, for, if the town needs four hundred thousand or five hundred thousand, or whatever the number is, that would be raised by this sale, there is something called the uh, the local government infrastructure fund. This is a, a program through the state of Maryland, through the Department of Housing and Community Development, it's designed exactly for this purpose. When a municipality needs to make a large capital expenditure, uh, and they don't necessarily have all the money right now, it, it's sort of like a mortgage, like you or I buying our, our home, you know, we don't have the entire amount in cash, we, we get a mortgage from a bank and we pay that, pay that mortgage off, you know, over a number of years, so this, this is very similar um, to that program, it's been used by uh, many, many municipalities throughout the state, uh, including some in Montgomery County, uh, Prince George's County, University Park, Tacoma Park. Uh, a recent example, nearby example rather, is Garrett Park in two thousand and two when um, their signature property, um, you know, the big historic building at, near the train station where they have their post office, their town offices, the Black's Restaurant was in need of restoration. Uh, and they also wanted to upgrade all their streetlights. Um, they uh, took out an eight hundred thousand dollar loan from the local government infrastructure fund. And uh, you know, they've, they paid that off over twenty years, so um, that is, uh, it's another option um, to use in situations like this, uh, that would, could be an alternative to uh, you know, selling off properties.
Okay, thank you, Al. I know uh, taking on debt is another challenge, you do have to pay that back. And uh, we do have a public works building to build. So uh, we, you know, we just have to, that would also be balanced in, you know, our. Thank you for that suggestion. Okay, are there any other hands? Okay, I am not seeing anything, so I guess. I'm sorry, wait, what?
Joe Campbell.
Oh, there he is, sorry, Joe, you moved around, you were at the bottom of the screen, now you're at the top. Go ahead, Joe. Joe, are you there? Did Joe freeze, or did I freeze?
We can hear you, Tracy.
Okay.
Now I might be on mute, or?
Now I, mute button. So now you're on mute, Joe. Now I.
I think he's leaving and coming back in.
Okay, all right, we'll give him a second or two. Uh, Jody, do you want to go ahead? You, you're still on.
Yeah, um, I, I, I just came in because I was on the Juneteenth Zoom. Um, I assume you're talking about selling, selling of St. Joseph's Park. I've already written a letter to the um, mayor and the town council, um, in my support of selling, of selling the land. I think, um, they're looking, they're planning and they're looking for what, where our greatest needs are as a town. And I trust in them in that this land that is not being used and um, can be sold to, um, to build a house is, is the right thing to do. And so I just want to say that I, I support, I support the selling of it.
Okay, thank you, Jody.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, sure.
Okay. How big could that house be without needing variances? Like with meeting all of the setbacks and the roads and the adjacent properties, do we know how large a footprint that house could have?
It's not going to be as big as you think. Uh, Matt, do you have any idea on a seventy-five hundred square foot with two fronts?
Yeah, so it's, uh, it would be a smaller house, uh, it is a corner lot, so it has two front planes. The front plane setbacks are twenty-five feet each, there's one side yard which has a ten-foot side yard setback and a rear setback of twenty feet, so the building envelope is quite small compared to a standard R sixty zone house. Um, there's no guarantee that trees would be removed for the house, um, which is something that we'd like to clarify from prior comments at council meetings. Um, you know, we can certainly put a building envelope out prior to the next meeting that shows what the size of the house could be built, and again, that's just the footprint. Uh, it could be two levels up to thirty-five feet in height.
Does that answer your question, Alicia?
It does, I'm just wondering about, we keep talking about somebody buying it to build a house, and the footprint does seem rather small, so I'm just like what you said, it would be a small house, so I'm very interested to see that, that footprint, because I don't know who would be interested to buy it to put up a small house, but I'm sure somebody might.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Joe, did you want to try again?
Thank you, how was that?
I can hear you.
I was wondering where.
On just for the record, the public record, or?
Could, could you, uh, no, just briefly, could you characterize a little more fully the uh, Kensington Historical Society's letter? I've not seen that, and this is the first I've heard about it, and uh, could you, could you, were they mostly for or against the sale?
I would say it was neither. Uh, Catherine is on the, and uh, is Kate still on? Kate, do you want to address the uh, Kensington Historical Society's uh, letter? I don't want to, Kate, are you there, Kate DeWitt? On your iPad?
I, I, I think we should get Joe a copy of the letter rather than.
Yeah, that, that'd be, that'd be fine, I, I was just wondering, I think it's, it's an important element to include in the public record, however, just to.
Well, it is part of the public record, I thought those letters had gone out, it's, you know, it was hard for me to um, to see, as Matt said, we were still collecting them, and we'll continue to collect them through the uh, till the Mar- I'm sorry, March sixth, is that correct?
Okay, that's great, that's fine.
Yeah, so we'll get them out.
The uh, substantive point I like to make very briefly is that I think this is a very unwelcome precedent that's proposed here with the sale of, of that parkland. I, I just don't think this is a really great move for the town of Kensington to, to, to do this, and it would open up the potential down the road for the sale of other parklands, for, for whatever reasons, if, if the, if those lands are no longer needed for uh, for town purpose. And I just really, I'm very wary about this precedent to sell off parkland.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Okay. All right, uh, not seeing any other hands. Looking all over the screen, uh, Beth, uh, one more time, go ahead.
Yeah, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, I just, I just thought it was interesting, I wanted to comment, you know, that Kensington Neighbors had an article about uh, the long history of Joseph's Park, and you know, it's historic, so um, I just think it would be somewhat embarrassing um, to publish a second article in Kensington Neighbors saying, um, you know, historic park, green space, um, so, so I just wanted to comment, that just seems kind of odd to me.
Okay, thank you very much, and just for clarity, Joseph Park is more than just, uh, that plat is more than just the Joseph Park, you actually live also in that plat. And uh, everyone on the north side pretty much is on that plat, so let's, let's be fair here, it's not just that piece of land. So.
Mayor, Mayor Fermi, I also add that I'd like to clarify for the record that Joseph Park is not in the historic district. It is not historic property.
Yes.
But it is historic.
It, so is your land, the land is historic. So it is part of a plat. My land's probably, I'm on the west side, it's probably got, I mean, it was owned by somebody who had some history, so let's, I think that's a good point on your part, but let's look at it at the larger, as far as the plat is not just Joseph Park. It includes St. Paul Park as well. Okay, anybody else? Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands, so we will need a motion to keep the record open until, is it March sixth or seventh, I think it's the seventh.
It is uh, March seventh at four P M.
Okay, so we will need a motion to keep the public record open.
I'll move to keep the public record open till March seventh, all right, Matt, sorry, till, on the sale of Joseph's Park.
Okay, is there a second? A second, okay, all those in favor? All right, well, thank you very much for everyone who came to the hearing. And we will get that information out as far as the letter and the other uh, public records of the people that we have received uh, emails from, okay? All right, uh, we will now go back to the town manager and staff. Uh, Matt, number one?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, uh, just quick update on a few projects, specifically the Carol and Hamley Place Storm Drain Project. Um, the contractors completed the test pits, they've ordered the structures and forms. Um, we're just kind of waiting for those to be delivered and, and a little bit of weather, and then we'll start the first storm drain project. Um, to address some issues that we're having uh, between Washington Street and Carroll Place, specifically down at Silver Creek. Um, the Howard Avenue sidewalk, which is the sidewalk that is going to connect uh, Connecticut Avenue to um, Armory Avenue on the north side, uh, is not quite complete, uh, there's been some delays due to the weather. Um, but once the weather improves a little bit, they'll finish pouring the concrete, we need to move the guard rail, and we need to put in a pedestrian ramp on the north side, so we hope to have that completed in the next week or two. Um, and then just want to announce that the uh, F Y twenty-six, that's twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six uh, fiscal year operating budget will be introduced at the uh, Wednesday, March twelfth town council meeting.
Does anybody have any questions with the town manager's report? Uh, Jody, you're on mute.
Um, and Matt, a crosswalk is going in there?
Yeah, so there'll be a crosswalk that will connect um, the, what would be the southwest corner of the intersection there to the northwest corner. By the, from the clock shop, yeah. Um, we just need to do the ramp on the north side, uh, and then they'll put in a crosswalk at that location. Um, and uh, we, we hope to have that, by the time the striping, uh, the milling and paving is completed, we're probably looking at early April for the project to be completely finished.
Okay, someone who walks there all the time, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that, that crossing at Connecticut and Howard is so dangerous. So we'll get pedestrians further down, so they at least can see the cars before, you know, coming down the street towards them. And do you have your hand up for something, or?
Just a question for Matt, um, and also like Jody, very uh, happy, excited and grateful to see that sidewalk going in. Um, my question is whether uh, we can go ahead and also purchase a bench to install at the ride-in, ride-on um, stop there?
Yes, uh, well, let me, let me just make sure the room, um, let me make sure there's enough room everywhere, we're also looking to plant some trees. Um, our tree box is not quite as large as we thought when we did the walkthrough, um, even with the back fill, but um, let me take a look at that, but I'm sure we can get something to kind of, to help the ride-on passengers there, so.
Okay, great, thanks, and then uh, second topic for, we can talk about this at the work session. But um, related to the F Y twenty-six budget, um, last year when we did the community budget forum, it was well received. And afterwards, there was some discussion about maybe doing it again this year, if so, if we did it, we should do it earlier. So um, wanted to mention that, and we can talk about it during our work session.
Anybody else have any questions about the town manager report? Uh, Leslie? You're not on mute, go ahead.
Um, so just as you're doing the crosswalk at Howard Avenue of Connecticut on the Safeway side, are there any plans to do the same over on Howard Avenue, Connecticut Avenue at the gas station side?
This is, this is not Howard Avenue, that belongs to the state, this is the Armory Avenue and Howard.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, they're, the terrible blind spot on both sides. I said they're, both, both sides are terrible blind spots for both the pedestrian and the cars, and I know this is something that Nate has brought up with State Highway. And um, we haven't really gotten anywhere with them yet.
Leslie, are you talking about on the north side of Howard Avenue on West Howard, where it went across from the gas station?
Where you, um.
When you come off the bridge.
Yes, you're just coming off the bridge, a car turns and there's no opportunity for, for a pedestrian to get across safely.
Yeah.
There's no sidewalk to walk down, and so when I heard adding a sidewalk, et cetera, because it was so difficult, I thought it was a mirror of the other side as well.
Why we're bringing them down to get them further away from Connecticut Avenue? So they can, you know, people have a better vision of the cars coming.
But that's on the Safeway side.
On the Safeway side.
The other side. Pardon?
Sorry, I know exactly what you're talking about, Matt does too. We looked at that when we were doing our audits, and we had recommended extending that sidewalk on the north side, but there is uh, utility equipment that it cannot be, um, it cannot be extended because of the, the, the um, obstructions along that, that, that section, that's why it has to go over to the south side, the sidewalk there. But um, you know, the idea of adding a crosswalk, we, we should explore that, especially if we do get the side path, a separated side path bridge, that on those sides that'll go over, we'll have to make improvements at that intersection on that side as well with the, with the state.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Not seeing any hands, all right, uh, so we're going to go ahead and uh, and we're going to go to public appearances next. Sorry to be skipping around, but I want to make sure we get that in. So this is the opportunity for you to bring up anything that we have not already spoken about, or that is on the current agenda, so if you have something you would like to bring up, please raise your hand. Uh, Leslie?
Um, all right, so uh, Leslie Olson Wheatley Street, um, I'm, I just.
Wear a yellow glove.
I, I'll, I'll do a yellow glove next, maybe.
Uh, yeah, that's helpful, thank you.
Um, so I'll, I'll bring it up about the problem that we have with the commercial properties not doing um, snow removal. And I happened to find out that um, Pepco's on Facebook or something, I made a comment and they responded, I don't really go on their site, so it was a couple of weeks, and I just saw it. Um, and they wanted to know what the addresses. that, and I just saw it. Um, and they wanted to know what the addresses were. And then I noticed that so many of our commercial properties don't have addresses. The Pepco vault doesn't, what the lot immediately behind it does it? The old Mulherran property does, but, um, that's may or may not be a town issue with regarding to the addresses and making them, um, visible to emergency vehicles or fire trucks or something like that. But it kind of is a concern if something were to happen and it would be difficult for a passerby to call it in. And it could affect, um, the residential area. So that's kind of an aside from the fact that the original comment I was gonna make is, um, they just don't clean their sidewalks. And, um, they did this time just around the vault, but not the two lots that they own behind on St. Paul.
Yeah, my guess is the contractor did not realize that those two lots belong to Pepco as well. That would be my guess.
Uh, that could be, um, usually they don't clean any of it. So it was good that they got this.
Yeah. Well, I know our, uh, our code officer, I believe you had, is it 24 or 48 hours after a snowfall, Matt?
Uh, 24, once the snowstorm ends.
Okay. So I know she has been going around, uh, you know, she has to wait for the 24 hours and then she can start going around. Sometimes it's hard to find, you know, the per- the right person, the owner to, uh, I know quality, the Quality Builders, which is on Connecticut Avenue there at the split. Um, Kaiser Permanente does it, Car Wash Coffee does it, and then, but then they don't do it. So that's, uh, you know, so, um, but she does go around and there's a fairly, the fine is what about? Do we need to raise that fine? Do you know what the fine is?
It's, uh, $65 for residential and I think it's 140 for commercial or somewhere right around there.
Okay. Well, I know we have some residents that don't do it too, and they, uh, when she's given the warnings have not been very pleasant with her, which is too bad. Because we all.
After the warning, I think they have another 24 hours.
That's probably correct, yeah. Yeah. So hopefully this is the end of the snow. That would be good. Yeah, thank you, Leslie. Uh, Joe?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I was wondering if, uh, Councilmember Crimmens could, could tell us where he found that transit corridor map that he showed early in the meeting today? Where online can it be found, just very briefly?
Uh, it is from Montgomery County Planning. It's a separate map that they put together. Let me see if I can just grab the URL and I will put it into the chat.
I don't believe we have a chat function.
Email him the link though.
Yeah, unfortunately, the chat function has been removed from these meetings.
The, uh, I will send it out. Um, Joe, I'm happy to send it to you. We got it from Montgomery County Planning and Council President Stewart's office.
Great.
Today because she was aware that we were going to be talking about this.
Wonderful, thank you. Uh, kudos to the town crew. And I know Mayor Furman mentioned this, but the, the snow removal for this most recent snow was, was really a top notch, uh, streets removal of the snow and, uh, it was really, really well done. So kudos to them. And, um, I was, uh, struck by Councilmember Bartram's comment earlier in the meeting about, uh, that there's an election in June. With that in mind, I'm wondering what the, uh, two incumbent, uh, council members who are up for reelection uh, have decided about their, uh, about their, uh, their plans, their candidacy, given that the, uh, town election would be less than four months away. And that's Councilmember Bartram and Councilmember Crimmens. Any plans?
I forgot that it was February, Joe, and that you'd be asking. Um, do, what's the filing deadline, Matt?
May something.
Yeah, May, uh, 14th, I believe. Susan, do you remember correctly their exact date?
It should be.
Second Monday in May.
Yeah, May 12th.
So, uh, I will have a definitive answer by May 12th. I want to keep you in suspense. That way you keep coming to the meetings.
Well, I, I know that you're a, a council member who has campaigned a year in advance in, in, in past elections. So I'm curious to.
I, I mean, my opinion doesn't change. I, this is one of the areas of my life that I enjoy deeply. Um, I love advocating on behalf of the town. I deeply appreciate that the mayor has allowed me to carve out, um, issues that I'm very passionate about around housing, around commercial development and redevelopment and to lead efforts around that. Um, and there's some very significant issues that are coming up in the coming years. Our battle for Summit Avenue extension, which, you know, I have helped to pick up the baton with other council members here from the council members who went before us. This is a decades-long, you know, um, negotiation we've had with uh, Montgomery County, and that is not completed yet. We're kind of in the peak of the struggle right now. Um, you know, uh, these are things that I'm very, very passionate about. And, you know, I say that only to say it would, you know, it would be hard to give up the fight now, Joe. But at the same time, I'm also a believer, I'm gonna steal one of Darren's lines, sorry Darren, I got to talk first, which is that the seats don't belong to us. And if there are other people who want to run for the seats, I also encourage them to run. It's great. It's a great way to serve your community. It doesn't mean I won't run against you potentially, but I don't want anybody to think that they shouldn't run. I do think, and Joe, you and I have had this discussion, that contested elections are great because they lead to lively discussion and debate about important topics facing the town and they give voters a real choice. That being said, if I were to run and it was uncontested, turns out that's pretty nice too.
That sounded like a campaign speech to me, Connor.
Well, you should, you should know, Jody, you wrote it.
I am certain that, um, I, I don't have an answer tonight. I'm certain that I will have one well before the deadline as, as I'm sure Connor will too. Because I think one of the things that, that we, we've seen at, at different levels of, of government is sort of the secret withdrawal and, and giving the, the seat off to somebody else. And I don't want that to happen. If, if I don't run or if I do run, I want it to be open with people knowing they can run and have a chance at, at being elected. So that's where I'm at. I, I, I'll let you know, Joe.
Thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm curious to know what you meant by secret withdrawal. I'm not familiar with that.
I, I mean that if, if, you know, this is a job that takes a lot of time. And if if we were to convey that we were running and then withdraw at the last minute and I tell somebody privately, we're doing that so that they file at the last minute and then it's an uncontested election between two people? Where had I announced in ample time for everyone to know that I was withdrawing? And two or three people might run? That, I, I think that's more democratic than, than saying I'm gonna run and then, then not running.
Yeah, I, I would agree. Has a secret withdrawal ever happened in Kensington, to your knowledge?
I don't know about Kensington. I don't know. I mean, I, I, I don't know. I, I, I know that, um, I think we did have one council member that withdrew at the last minute in recent years.
Thank you, Mayor Furman.
You're welcome. Okay, well, thank you for that discussion. Um, I just will remind everybody that if you are considering running, um, it's, uh, there's information on the, uh, website. Have we updated that, um, Alex? We should be doing that if we have asked that.
Not yet.
Okay. Okay, great. Um, there is information on the website once Alex updates it, which should be in the next, um, couple of days. Um, but this, it, um, I know when I became mayor, it was just a couple of things that you had to deal with. The world has gotten much more complicated. So do not run unless you've got the time. That is very important. That's my only advice to you. Make sure you have the time. Because this, uh, there's a lot of meetings and there is a lot of things to do. And you're going in a hundred miles. And, you know, especially if you have, I know sometimes it's a hardship for our council members with children with busy jobs. So just make sure that you can make the time for it and you will enjoy it very much. But it is not the world we, that I've lived here since 1980. So I've lived here a long time and it was much simpler world back then, but it's not a simple world anymore. And I have a feeling with the way our government, federal government above us is gonna make things a little bit more difficult. So we need to, um, just make sure you have time. That's the main thing I would recommend. Uh, Joe, did you have another question?
Just to clarify, there, there is no such thing as term limits, uh, on Kensington elected, does, uh.
There are no terms on Kensington elections, our elected officials. Okay. All right, uh, so we, if that is it, I don't see any, any other hands. So we will move on to the rest of the ordinance resolutions and regulations. Uh, we've taken care of number one. So Matt, number two?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, counsel before you this evening is Resolution R dash 02 dash 2024. A resolution of the mayor and town council of Kensington authorizing a contribution in the amount of $40,000 from the fiscal year FY 25 budget to the Noise Children's Library Foundation. Uh, this was, uh, directed to the staff following our January council meeting to help offset additional costs related to construction for the Noise Children's Library Foundation project.
Okay, so we, we voted on doing that, but we now, uh, are being asked to vote officially via resolution. So if I could get a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution number R dash O2 dash 2025, authorizing a contribution in the amount of $40,000 uh, from this year's budget to the Noise Children's Library Foundation.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, Matt, number three?
Thank you, counsel. Uh, before you, this evening is Resolution number R dash 03 dash 2025. A resolution of the mayor and town coun- town council of Kensington confirming appointments to the ethic, I'm sorry, the, uh, yes, the Ethics Commission. Um, this is to renew, uh, Deborah Eckert and Tina Sherman, uh, and Mike McCurry's appointment remains till next year.
Okay. All right, uh, does anybody have any questions regarding the Ethics Committee? We have not talked about that previously. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. So if we can get a motion?
So I'll move that we adopt Resolution R dash 03 dash 2025. Uh, resolution of the town council confirming the appointments made by the mayor to the town Ethics Commission for Deborah Eckert and Tina Sherman.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Darren. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Matt, number four?
Thank you, counsel. Uh, before you this evening is Resolution number R dash 04 dash 2025. Resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington authorizing the donation of a surplus vehicle, a 2008 Ford F250 from the Public Works Department to the Montgomery County Students Automotive Trades Foundation. This is the, uh, Edison High School of Technology, which is located in Wheaton. Uh, our policy has been to donate, uh, surplus vehicles to, uh, Edison High School, uh, so their students can work on the vehicles. Um, this would be for our artist vehicle. Um, for those of you that know, it's the one with the lift gate or Pablo's truck. Um, there is significant repairs that are necessary for this vehicle. Um, and we have decided that it is best to move on from a 17-year-old truck.
Okay. Well, does anybody have any questions regarding this ordinance? Or resolution, excuse me? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Uh, can we get a motion?
I'll move to, um, approve Resolution number R dash 04 dash 2025, uh, a resolution to authorize the donation of a surplus vehicle. Uh, 2008 Ford F250 VIN number, no, just kidding. For the Public Works Department to Montgomery County Students Automotive Trades Association or Foundation.
Okay, thank you. Now this, this truck will have to be towed there. Um, it cannot be driven, so we'll have to take care of that. Okay, is there a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And number five?
Thank you, Mayor. And this is not the first truck we've towed to the Edison High School and they were always appreciative of any vehicle we, we tow or drive there. So, um, Resolution number R dash 05 dash 2025 is a resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Kensington authorizing the purchase of a new 2025 Ford F350 for the Public Works Department for a bid contract with Baltimore County, uh, which was awarded to Apple Ford LLC in the amount of $60,819 and 30 cents.
Okay. Any questions? Uh, Joe?
Uh, yes, what does that mean that it was awarded per a bid contract awarded by Baltimore County? I mean, is this another piggyback, uh, case of piggybacking on another municipality's, uh, bid process?
Correct, yes. So Baltimore County put out a bid to the, uh, commercial Ford dealers in the state of Maryland. Apple Ford provided, uh, the price and we were piggybacking on that bid contract.
Do you know how many bids were received?
I do not, no. I do not know. Uh, there were two bids. Uh, there was a state of Maryland bid, uh, and there was a Baltimore County bid. Uh, the state of Maryland bid expired. Uh, my understanding was that state of Maryland was not going to renew their bid contract and that they were going to, uh, stop buying vehicles. So the Baltimore County bid, uh, was our best, um, option.
So was it the only bid essentially?
I, I, it was, it was given to the commercial Ford dealerships. Apple Ford is holding the bid, Joe. That, I mean, it wouldn't matter what dealership we went to, they would give us the same price.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? All right, if we can get a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution number R dash 05 dash 2025.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we've done, so, uh, I will just remind the council that we are, uh, we have the meeting next Thursday, the 20th, for those who can make it uh, with the county executive. Um, our, um, work session is going to be on February 18th. And we have, our next town meeting will be Wednesday, March 12th, 2025. And we will be doing that in person as long as it's not, uh, bad weather, but hopefully mid-March will be okay. So that would be good. All right.
And then, and then the last, Tracy, just as a reminder, you said it earlier, but the Housing Now Community Meeting uh, is scheduled for March 3rd, a Monday at Kensington Town Hall, for all those that were, um, curious about the ZTA that was introduced.
Yes, and, uh, and we will have three of the county council people, so it's a great opportunity to come out and, um, meet your county council. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Nate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much and have a good evening.